What am I talking about? First of all, I gotta get the audio off.
Yeah.
We've led you to very general.
It'll be saving that kind of money pretty soon.
Look at Charlie.
Yeah, I know.
He's gone.
Yeah.
I'm dead.
You're not good at what it's me doing.
I'm getting pumped in my mouth.
So are we gonna try for ten minutes?
Yeah.
Again.
Yeah, some dollars.
Can't get them excited like that.
I'll go ahead and tell the meeting order.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, civil, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda is, uh, carry block.
Hello, everybody.
Okay.
Let's see, this one's for you, right?
Okay.
Just in addition, you want a good book?
Yeah.
That was probably a good one. I'd love it for you, Brian.
Was I supposed to bring that book down, sir?
You don't have to.
No, we're gonna go through it.
I filed it.
I filed it.
I filed it.
I filed it.
Okay, so tonight, um, what I have for you is just the renew- upcoming renewal for the property and casualty insurance and the workers comp. So both of those policies, um, are renewing September seventeenth. Um, you have your binders that I delivered to you prior to the meeting for review, which had, um, review of your claims that have, uh, occurred over the past years and but mostly for you to review the ones that occurred this year and also the services that have been provided by Bliss McKnight, um, and or our office. Um, did you have any questions on any of that as you reviewed that?
I did not.
Okay, and then the insert that I brought you is the workers comp claims because, um, I had left that portion off, um, accidentally. So at the very back of that, uh, loss history is the current term of insurance. The rest of them are in your binder from the past years. So if you go to the page, I think it's five of eight, four of eight, you'll see the highlighted claims, um, and those are the ones that occurred since last September to this Sept- or to this current date. Um, so you can take a look at those, but as we discussed, um, the claims were minimal this past year. So that's what we want to see. Uh, but you can review them individually, and if you have any questions on any of them, let me know. But they were all, you know, fairly minor, um, uh, type injuries. So so that's good for more than one reason. And then the second part of the binder is the actual insurance re- renewal. So you're able to take a look at, um, the limits of liability, which we're not changing. The coverages included, we're not changing. Um, so did you have any questions on any of those limits of insurance? And that would be like in se- in section two, that Bliss McKnight proposal. So your all your, um, bodily injury and property damage liability, the jail liability, all your different, uh, liability for EMS and all of your departments, your auto liability, um, employment practices, employee benefits, all of those things are provided by, uh, by Bliss McKnight. And that is renewing as it was as far as coverage.
Now, there were some options with that. Is that correct?
Yep, yep, and we'll we'll get to those in just a minute. If it's okay, I'll just kind of go through the binder and then we'll come back to those different options. Um, so then we talked about the property limits and I gave you a copy of all of the buildings, all of the amounts of contents that we have covered at each location for you to look through to make sure that, um, you know, there hadn't been anything purchased or sold that I wasn't aware of over this past year for you to take a look at those limits of coverage to make sure that you feel they're adequate. And if we need to make any adjustments, of course, we can. Otherwise, the deductible will remain the same on the property as it was last year. And we're gonna have a couple of options that we're gonna talk about on that as well. We'll just kind of go through and then come back to those options. Did you have any questions on the property coverages?
No.
Yeah, it's pretty much, I mean, we update the amounts of coverage, um, by the mandatory amounts for inflationary reasons to make sure that our building and contents coverage continue to increase as, uh, building costs and labor costs increase. So that's really the only changes that we had there. And you have your workers comp proposal, um, which we discussed that as well. Um, the limit is, of course, staying the same. The payroll is automatically updated by the company by five percent to, um, incorporate any change in payroll that might happen over the year that, um, that way we don't get behind for auditing purposes. Um, last year, when we had made the five percent increase, which is what they require, when we did our audit this year, when Micheline provided what, uh, needed to be provided to the company, um, you rece- received a return premium of of a hundred and eighty-nine dollars. So that means we're staying right on target, which is what we want. We don't want you to be overpaying premium that you don't have to be giving the company to use, and we don't want you underpaying so that you're faced with an unexpected amount, um, at the end of the year. So our goal is to keep that as equal to your actual payroll as possible. So what they do is they take the current payroll, increase it by the five percent, and then, uh, multiply that by the rates per class that you have on your policy. And that's how that rate is, um, uh, calculated. And then also, uh, we discussed the experience modification as we do each year. This year it did go up to a one point five six from a one point five one. So that did generate additional premium because of that. However, IPEP did come back in and give you a twenty-five percent discount because the past two years that we've been insured with them, we've had good experience on the workers comp. So they felt that, you know, we were deserving of a a little bit of a break back off of that. So so you're still paying, um, about thirty-five, uh, thousand dollars more than what the standard rate would be if our claim situation wasn't what it had been in the past. So but we're on, we're trending the right way. So that's what we want to see. And we're doing that by the safety committee, uh, meetings and trainings, which we want to, you know, make sure that we're continuing and get those things on the calendar for the end of this year and the upcoming year. Then there's just some information about just workers comp in general for you to, um, review just for your own knowledge. And then in tab five, we have our premium review and summary. So before we completely go through that, I do want to talk about the options. Um, so on the automobile coverage, right now you have a thousand dollar deductible on your comprehensive coverage and a thousand deductible on your collision. So it works just like your own personal auto. If you hit a deer or have some type of a comprehensive claim, the county would pay the first thousand dollars and the company is gonna pick up the rest of that claim.
You said a thousand.
Thousand comprehensive and a thousand collision. So both types of claims, you're gonna pay the first thousand. Uh, my recommendation, or I shouldn't even say recommendation, an option for you to consider is to go to a higher deductible, which would, uh, generate some premium savings. So our next deductible would be twenty-five hundred on comp and collision, and that would save about sixteen thousand dollars per year. So that is something that you consider, can consider. You can look at the past accidents, um, and I think, Donnie, didn't we calculate that the other day? How many accidents we had? And if we had the same amount this year and we took the savings, we'd still be ahead of the game. So, you know, you don't know because we don't can't predict what's gonna happen in the future. So.
Deer are worse.
Yeah, deer has been the worst, of course. Um, we're coming up to that kind of time of year again where those start happening again more frequently.
If we went to the twenty-five hundred, we'd pay the first twenty-five hundred, and then just like you said on the thousand.
Yep, that's correct. So the company would s- would take on the rest of that risk. So I mean, just like everybody, um, is aware, the cost of repairs has skyrocketed. And so for a twenty-five hundred dollar claim, there doesn't have to be very much damage. And it's, you know, it's already up to that amount. So, you know, we're seeing deer claims where, uh, repairs are twenty-five thousand now. It's just, it's crazy, um, repair costs. So that's just an option for you to consider. You absolutely do not have to do it. It isn't a mandatory thing by the company. It's just something to look at.
And how how many claims were there?
I think there was fourteen, but not all of them, um, were, um, our fault. So we we went through it. I can't remember right off the top of my head, but I can look. Let's see. I think it was eight, if I remember right, that we calculated it. Two, three, four, five, six, eight. There was seven claims that we paid deductible. So there was more claims than that, but some of them we didn't pay deductible because they were property damage or, um, we were hit by someone else. So we settled the claim. And then like I was explaining to you earlier, we subrogated back against that company and got your deductible back, even though you paid it to us for us to settle the claim. That gets subrogated, we get that money back, and we return it to you. So some of those claims are that situation. Um, so seven claims is is what we paid deductible on. So.
So that's like ten-five. Would that be the difference?
Uh, seven thousand is what you paid. You would pay twenty-five hundred times seven is what? Fourteen, uh, six, what is it? Sixty-one, twenty-one. Twenty-five hundred, geez.
So fifteen hundred times seven, though, that's that'd be ten-five.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So ten-five versus sixteen. Sixteen is a bigger number as far as savings.
Yes.
In this case.
It is for sure, but we don't know what that time amount is gonna be. That's the, you know, that's the thing that we can't predict. So.
Farmers are picking food.
Yeah, so that's just something that you guys have to kind of throw around and decide whether you want to, you know, try to realize the savings and roll the dice, and hopefully we have seven or less claims and, you know, you're ahead on that. So. So that was that option. Then the other option is on the property side. So on the property, last year the company required us to go to a higher deductible. So the county chose the fifty thousand dollar deductible option. So we did that. And then what we sustained or what we saw throughout the year was, um, a couple different claims where we had damages to, I'm gonna call it mobile equipment. So things like, um, plow.
Injury, so, so that's good for more than one reason. And then the second part of the binder is the actual insurance re- renewal. So you're able to take a look at um the limits of liability, which we're not changing. The coverages included, we're not changing. So did you have any questions on any of those limits of insurance? And that would be like in se- in section two, that Bliss McKnight proposal. So your, all your bodily injury and property damage liability, the jail liability. All your different liability for EMS and all of your departments, your auto liability. Um employment practices, employee benefits, all of those things are provided by, by Bliss McKnight. And that is renewing as it was as far as coverage.
Now, there were some options with that, is that correct?
Yep, yep, and we'll, we'll get to those in just a minute. If it's okay, I'll just kind of go through the binder and then we'll come back to those different options. Um so then we talked about the property limits and I gave you a copy of all of the buildings. All of the amounts of contents that we have covered at each location for you to look through to make sure. That um you know, there hadn't been anything purchased or sold that I wasn't aware of over this past year. For you to take a look at those limits of coverage to make sure that you feel they're adequate. And if we need to make any adjustments, of course, we can. Otherwise, the deductible will remain the same on the property as it was last year. And we're gonna have a couple of options that we're gonna talk about on that as well. We'll just kind of go through and then come back to those options. Did you have any questions on the property coverages? Yeah, it's pretty much, I mean, we update the amounts of coverage um by the mandatory amounts for inflationary reasons. To make sure that our building and contents coverage continue to increase as uh building costs and labor costs increase. So that's really the only changes that we had there. And you have your workers' comp proposal, um which we discussed that as well. Um the limit is of course staying the same. The payroll is automatically updated by the company by five percent. To um incorporate any change in payroll that might happen over the year that. Um that way, we don't get behind for auditing purposes. Um last year. When we had made the five percent increase, which is what they require. When we did our audit this year, when Michaeline provided what uh needed to be provided to the company. Um you rece- received a return premium of a hundred and eighty-nine dollars. So that means we're staying right on target, which is what we want. We don't want you to be overpaying premium, that you don't have to be giving the company to use, and we don't want you underpaying. So that you're faced with an unexpected amount um at the end of the year. So our goal is to keep that as equal. To your actual payroll as possible. So what they do is they take the current payroll, increase it by the five percent and then uh. Multiply that by the rates per class that you have on your policy. And that's how that rate is um calculated. And then also, uh we discussed the experience modification as we do each year. This year it did go up to a one point five six from a one point five one. So that did generate additional premium because of that. However, IPEP did come back in and give you a twenty-five percent discount because the past two years. That we've been insured with them, we've had good experience on the workers' comp. So they felt that. You know, we were deserving of a, a little bit of a break back off of that. So, so you're still paying um. About thirty-five uh thousand dollars more than what the standard rate would be if our claim situation wasn't. What it had been in the past. So but we're, we're trending the right way. So that's what we want to see. And we're doing that by the safety committee uh meetings and trainings, which we want to, you know, make sure that we're continuing. And get those things on the calendar for the end of this year and the upcoming year. Then there's just some information about just workers' comp in general for you to um review, just for your own knowledge. And then in tab five, we have our premium review and summary. So before we completely go through that, I do want to talk about the options. Um so on the automobile coverage, right now you have a thousand dollar deductible on your comprehensive coverage. And a thousand deductible on your collision. So it works just like your own personal auto. If you hit a deer or have some type of a comprehensive claim. The county would pay the first thousand dollars and the company is gonna pick up the rest of that claim.
You said a thousand.
Thousand comprehensive and a thousand collision. So both types of claims, you're gonna pay the first thousand. Uh my recommendation, or I shouldn't even say recommendation, an option for you to consider is to go to a higher deductible, which would. Uh generate some premium savings. So our next deductible would be twenty-five hundred on comp and collision. And that would save about sixteen thousand dollars per year. So that is something that you consider, can consider. You can look at the past accidents. Um and I think, Donnie, didn't we calculate that the other day? How many accidents we had? And if we had the same amount this year and we took the savings, we'd still be ahead of the game. So you know, you don't know because we don't, can't predict what's gonna happen in the future. So. Yeah, deer has been the worst, of course. Um. We're coming up to that kind of time of year again, where those start happening again more frequently.
If we went to the twenty-five hundred, we'd pay the first twenty-five hundred and then just like you said on the thousand.
Yep, that's correct. So the company would s- would take on the rest of that risk. So I mean, just like everybody um is aware, the cost of repairs has skyrocketed and so. For a twenty-five hundred dollar claim, there doesn't have to be very much damage. And it's, you know, it's already up to that amount. So, you know, we're seeing deer claims where uh repairs are twenty-five thousand now. It's just. It's crazy um repair costs. So that's just an option for you to consider. You absolutely do not have to do it. It isn't a mandatory thing by the company. It's just something to look at.
And how, how many claims were there?
I think there was fourteen, but not all of them um were um our fault. So. We, we went through it. I can't remember right off the top of my head, but I can look. It was eight, if I remember right. That we calculated it. Five, six, eight. There was seven claims that we paid deductible. So there was more claims than that, but some of them we didn't pay deductible because they were property damage or um. We were hit by someone else. So we settled the claim and then like I was explaining to you earlier, we subrogated back against that company and got your deductible back. Even though you paid it to us for us to settle the claim. That gets subrogated, we get that money back and we return it to you. So some of those claims are that situation. Um so seven claims is, is what we paid deductible on. So.
So that's like ten-five, would that be the difference?
Uh seven thousand is what you paid. You would pay twenty-five hundred times seven is what, fourteen? Sixty, what is it? Twenty? Twenty-five hundred, geez.
So fifteen hundred times seven, though, that's, that'd be ten-five.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So ten-five versus sixteen. Sixteen is a bigger number as far as savings.
Yes.
In this case.
It is for sure, but we don't know what that time amount is gonna be. That's the, you know, that's the thing that we can't predict. So. Yeah, so that's just something that you guys have to throw around and decide whether you want to, you know. Try to realize the savings and roll the dice and hopefully we have seven or less claims and, you know, you're ahead on that. So. So that was that option. Then the other option is on the property side. So on the property, last year the company required us to go to a higher deductible. So the county chose the fifty thousand dollar deductible option. So we did that. And then what we sustained or what we saw throughout the year was um a couple different claims. Where we had damages to, I'm gonna call it mobile equipment. So things like um plows, salt spreaders, um those are a couple of things that occurred. And then. Some of Jim's EMS equipment, when an ambulance is damaged, a lot of the equipment, whether it's specifically damaged. Inside of the ambulance has to be replaced. And that was very, that's mandatory for him to replace a lot of that. So. That was very expensive. Well, at a fifty thousand deductible, he's sustaining a lot of that cost. So we tried to look at some ways where maybe we can um lower some of the deductibles on some of that mobile equipment. Still keep the big deductible on the big property. So we're talking just like buildings and content. So you're thinking. Uh catastrophic type claims, storm damage, fires, those type of things. You would still have that fifty thousand deductible. But then on the smaller things, bringing that deductible down to a lower level so that if you have those claims. The insurance company is gonna step in at a quicker, quicker rate. So the first option. Was lowering the mobile equipment and Jim's equipment down to a ten thousand dollar deductible. And that was a premium savings of. That was a premium saving or a premium cost, sorry, of seven thousand dollars. So you would be paying seven thousand dollars. A year to bring the deductible down on those pieces of equipment by forty thousand dollars. So you'd have a ten thousand. Instead of a fifty thousand deductible. But the second option and the one that if you're gonna make a change, I would recommend would be the mobile equipment, the bigger things. Plows, tractors, um the, the bigger items would still have the ten thousand deductible. But the smaller things, Jim's type of equipment, um I think voting machines was in that list, uh sheriff radios. Some of that smaller equipment would only have a thousand dollar deductible. And that premium would be uh eight, nine, uh about eight, eight thousand dollars more, nine thousand dollars more.
And we did talk with the cameras couldn't, wouldn't classify for that.
They wouldn't. We could, we could classify them into, into that inland marine schedule. That's what that, this is called an inland, inland marine floater. So it's things that travel around outside of the buildings. We have to insure a little bit differently. So we could bring those um into the inland marine schedule. Um but we would have to list each camera, which we can do. It would be hard. We could do it. Um we just have to get a list of those things and then see what kind of cost we'd be looking at to. You know, the total cost to ensure that. So we'd have to work with maybe the company that provides those cameras and get a value. On the total amount and, and see.
My opinion on that, I think, would weigh on the camera. I didn't get a whole jack like I told you. Over that number of storms, it's not too long ago.
And that's a change. Yeah, we can make that, that type of a change at any time. It doesn't have to be done just right now. So, but I just was looking at your year. You know, i- in summary, and like where are we seeing claims? Where are we seeing, you know, things that um are kind of. Kind of hurt a couple of the different departments just because of that deductible, then, you know, they're having to come up with. Those funds and their budgets to take care of some of those things that get, get costly.
And if we went with the ten on certain thing, how much was that gonna raise you?
If you go with the ten thousand, it's gonna raise you by seven thousand dollars. So that's under option one on page uh seven of ten in section two on that proposal. And if you go to the ten thousand on the big things, so tractors, you know, that bigger equipment. But a thousand dollars on, I, I just call it Jim's stuff because that's what we see most of. That's the heaviest part of that equipment. Um it would be a hundred and thirty-one thousand. So that would be um nine thousand two hundred dollars more, three hundred dollars more. Whatever the difference there is between those two.
So if we go with either of those two options. And we turn in more payable claims that you're gonna have to pay?
Yep.
Are we gonna see rate increases next year?
That's a good question. The company that would be insuring the inland marine. So this Jim's small stuff is controlled more by Bliss McKnight themselves. So I'm gonna say hesitantly, no, unless we saw something, you know, where we're turning in just tons and tons of claims. No, they're pretty reasonable with the way that they hold the rate steady. With Chubb, which is our property carrier. They are a brokered uh property company that Bliss McKnight uses. Possibly. So if we, again, if we started seeing a really high frequency of these things, then. Yes, there's a possibility that the rate would increase, just like all lines of business. Uh you know, that's just part of it.
So my concern on that would be if we had five claims now, uh because we wouldn't have qualified prior.
Right.
And that's true.
But now we do. Are we gonna see dollars the next year and the next year potentially creeping up again?
And that is something to consider. So.
A, a weighing both ways.
Yep.
And if we did see it come up next year, we could always go back what it was.
Yeah, you could always go back to the. You can.
Hopefully don't.
Hopefully we don't have any claims this year.
That would be, that'd be.
Do you see that helping you?
Yeah, usually the lo- smaller stuff, we just take care of.
Right.
Here. So I mean, that, that.
But like Gary's saying, most of your stuff's gonna be switched out, right? If a wreck, bad wreck happens.
Once the cot's been in an accident, it's done.
And that's what.
That's thirty-six thousand dollars.
Right, that's, that's what we were seeing this, where the two.
For lift itself is about fifteen thousand. That's done. Uh has to go through a one-year rigorous testing in the last two of them. And that stress test.
So you know, those things for him are just so costly and there's just, yeah, no choice in the matter as to. You know, trying to patch it together to make it work, you know, and not have to have a claim. There's, there's, you can't do that with that. Um other things, you know, mobile equipment, you might be able to do that with, you know, a salt spreader or something like that, but you can't.
Mike, on your salt spreader and.
Well, I, I think it's a realistic possibility, you know? I just don't wanna go to the point where every time something happens, we're throwing in another appearance claim, you know?
So, so if you go to section. Let's go to section six just real quick. So this is just a summary of some different pub um. Risk management services that both IPEP and Bliss McKnight offer. So I put that in there just so that you can review, just to see some of the options that are available to the county. The safety committee also has this information, and this is where they, they look when they're determining what um. Classes they want us to come in and hold for them. So, um but that way you have your eyes on that. And then if we go to section five. This is your premium review and summary. And so you can see what each uh section of coverage is renewing at and an explanation of the premium increases. So on your liability side, the premium is going to be renewing at two hundred and sixty-three thousand eighty-nine dollars. The reason for the increase on that is the increase in exposure, which is your payroll is higher. The number of officers that we have on staff is higher and the rate increase to the general um jail and police exposures. Um just to the nature of um what we're seeing with jail liability and police claims. Um with the liability side. Um and then we just had a large reserve um on an ongoing claim that hit. On a claim that they expect to pay out a large payout. So that just hit as well. And then your employment practices, that um only increased because of the exposure that we have. So everything is rated on the number of employees. Um and so that is the reason for the increase on that. Up to forty-four thousand three hundred and nineteen. Your employee benefits is at three thousand two hundred and seventy-two. Again, it's based on. Um number of employees. The automobile, depending on which option you go with. If you stay with it the way that it is now with a thousand deductible, it's up, the premium is a hundred and forty thousand seven ninety-two. And the reason for that increase is because our loss ratio on our auto is a two hundred and twenty-two percent. So we're paying out to, you know, twice as much as what we're getting in premium. So that's. That's what's happened there. And then the property.
Sorry. Automobile, then if we went to the twenty-five hundred, it would actually save us.
It would save you. So that would bring that back down to about what it was before. And then property, depending if you choose an option that we just discussed, or you renew as is. If you renew as is, the premium is a hundred and twenty-one thousand eight forty-three. That is um the, the reason for the increase on that is just exposure. So the increase for the inflationary factors for the building and contents. Um and then there was a, a three percent actual rate increase, uh which was not bad actually. Um and then the workers' comp policy is going to renew at two hundred and forty thousand six hundred and seven. That's the same payroll plus the five percent as last year. And that experience mod, which went from a one point five one to a one point five six. So we do expect to see that come back down next year. We should start to see some relief on that. So we wanna see that trend back down as we have in the past. So. So the total renewal, if you renew as is, is eight hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. So you just would need to decide on the auto option and the property option if you wanna exercise either of those. To determine the exact renewal amount.
So this is a pretty significant increase, no matter which version we go with here. Um. And my understanding is we need a decision on this somewhat quickly.
Yeah, because your renewal is September seventeenth and I have to order the renewal. It doesn't happen automatically. So yeah, we, we have to make a decision of how we're gonna move forward, even if we wanna look at other changes and we can certainly do that. But we at least have to get the renewal ordered so that your coverage continues. Yes.
Seventeenth?
Before the seventeenth really is.
They surely need to vote.
Yeah, I don't like to wait till the last minute. Uh. The first year that we did your insurance, we waited till the last meeting because we had to. And the courthouse got struck by lightning that night. And so thank God I went back to my office and faxed things in and they had it. But I don't like to be in that um.
And so if we did, uh sound like we're gonna make a decision tonight, couldn't we change it if something, you know? Could we would get, start getting bad business going out?
Absolutely. We can make changes to the policy at any time. That is not a problem at all. Yep.
So I think, based on all the department heads I've talked to, everybody that really likes working with Gary.
Yeah.
In, in this situation, is this a workaround where we don't need three bids for insurance?
Insurance is a different type of, is this not require the publicly bid that?
Okay, so we don't have to have multiple quotes?
It's a, it's a, it's a service quote. So service quotes, especially since historically the county has not. Bid it out in the last, I don't know, we're working with Kerry for, cause I, I like work too.
Right.
So it's not something we've historically done. You, in the future, you guys can, but since it's a service contract, it fits under an exception.
Okay, I just wanted to verify that we weren't causing any trouble.
They, they take a lot off my plate too, all the little claims. I mean. You've got a litigious faction here that a police officer looks at somebody the wrong way and they're suing for something. And you know, if I had to handle every single one of those. I'd, we need three of them. So, I mean, they take a lot of those off my plate. So just to put in a, I know you guys are the office owners, like, I like working with them too.
I will tell you, I mean, as far as my office goes and the service that we provide to the county, we're, we're in your account every single day. There's not a day that goes by that we aren't doing something inside of your account. So you know, whether it's talking with the different department heads who, you know, most of them have my cell phone, my daughter's cell phone, and we're absolutely have no problem with that at all. But literally, it takes that much service work all year round to handle what you guys have going on. Um so, you know, that being said, it's not like we just renew this and it gets put in the file drawer and, you know, we don't touch it again.
I know you're real good, like if, uh, if the bishop calls me, I ask him to call you directly.
Yeah.
And you always step up and do it. I never get a second call back. Maybe that's a plus.
Absolutely.
They are endorsed, endorsed by the um Association of Indiana Counties. Because of the great service that they provide and the, the attorneys that they have on staff that they work with. They're excellent. I mean, they just, they know government law and they know how to handle it. And so. It, it's, it means a lot than, you know, not having that um access to that. So. And the other thing I will tell you is that markets have shrunk in the governmental arena as far as um companies pulling out of the market. Uh for any um jail exposure. They don't wanna insure them anymore. So there's very few companies that are even willing to look at a county that has a jail attached to it. So. You know, I feel like Bliss has been with us now for, this will be our fourteenth year. They've handled things through our ups and downs. Um so you know, sometimes we do see premium increase, but sometimes I think it could have been warranted to have more of a premium increase based on things that we've had going on. So I feel like overall, they've been fair with, you know, the, the way the premiums have gone. So. And that's just from looking at it, you know, from my standpoint, what I see over the whole entire account. So.
I'm prepared to make a motion. You guys are ready to forward. I make a motion that we move forward with Kerry's twenty-twenty-five proposal. With the exception of moving our auto to a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible. And going to option number two for the property. So the eight, eight hundred and thirteen thousand nine twenty-two would be different. And we can run those numbers uh for the record.
Yep.
But that would be my proposal.
And the second one is where we take Jim's and the county grab the ten thousand.
Uh it would be option number two, which is the better of the two.
Would be.
Jim's was at the uh.
Jim's equipment and the police radios and the voting machines would be a thousand deductible. And then the bigger equipment, mobile equipment.
That's the option, Mike.
Yeah, would be the ten thousand.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, a motion in the second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
And can we pencil that out for the record real quick?
Yeah, can I do that and?
Sure. I just wanna make sure that.
Right.
All legitimate.
Yep, no problem. So I'm just gonna go sit for the hair dryer, my calculator, and just do that both way.
If anybody's here for the opioid agreement, but they asked to be on this agenda. He asked me to put it. We already had the agenda posted when he calls. But I told him it could be under other business.
That's something I have to take care of now. There's a.
Time gives it it.
There is, yeah, I, so you guys will have to vote to opt into this one. A lot of them are opt-outs. This one's an opt-in. I think the deadline to opt-in to get payments to be part of that fund. Is the end of September. So as long as you guys vote to opt in, which I don't know why you wouldn't, your, your other option is to sue these providers. Individually, which we don't have the capacity to do that. So. In order to receive settlement, settlement funds from this settlement agreement, you've gotta vote to do it and then. I don't know if you.
I'm making a motion.
Motion is there second?
Second.
Alls in favor, aye?
Aye.
Yeah, good.
And then Donnie asks for the industrial park road.
Um we talked about the number of the industrial park and you said Rachel didn't want.
If I remember right, yeah, it's been a while back.
Yeah, it's been a while. I just got questions about it a couple of weeks ago.
Well, I wouldn't say she didn't want it. It wasn't in favor of it at that.
Right, yeah, something like that, yeah. But my thing is, and when the people call me, if we don't take care of that road. Why have we got an industrial park? You know, I mean, and if, so right now, the bucket factory takes care of it. So if we settle an airpiece ground for someone else, who's gonna take care of it? You know what I mean?
Right.
I just think it'd be better for us, cause I guess we have for years. I don't know, it's on uh. I think Rachel maybe said one on the inventory, whatever, but I just think we should put it on just for that. Hopefully sometime we sell some on that there you, so.
Would it make any sense to request her to be here and maybe she could tell us her thoughts on why she wasn't in favor of it?
I would be okay with that.
Maybe at the next week.
Next week, yeah, yeah.
That way we have a better understanding.
Yeah, that was my only thing.
Yeah.
And then while we're on it, you want me to go on with?
Yeah.
About the farm ground. I know there's been some question, there was farm ground. I sent you guys both email or text the other day. I just think it's fair, if we, if we're gonna make it bid out, we bid it out. So we're gonna leave this guy, take care of it?
That was my question on something like that. Like, is that something where it would have to be bid out? So it's kind of falls under what I just talked about. It's, it's, it's a service contract. He's providing a service. You technically don't have to bid it out. But obviously with anything, it's not, not like it's bad practice to bid something out.
Right.
I guess it depends on.
Well, the thing, uh his question is, I mean, how long ago did it build? Fourteen, seventeen years ago. Since then, he's took care of the ground. From nothing, didn't charge us, we didn't charge him. From nothing, didn't charge us, we didn't charge him.
Yeah, and and so commissioners in Plaskett County have a similar arrangement with ground that they own that's been in place for decades. You know, same kind of question arises every year is whether it's worth bidding it out or whether or not, you know, there's some.
I mean, I that type of ground, I don't think you're gonna get many.
Mike can know that. I don't know. He said he won't grow corn, won't grow bean. I think he's tried.
It's tough.
Now he's trying to grow hay on it, but like he said, he's not gonna put no money in it if we're gonna bid it out.
Which I think, I mean, he's already put.
Yeah, exactly. And he said he knows that's his fault, you know, would he decide to go to bid? But I think we need to tell him what we're going, you know, and make it fair to him.
Well, I wonder if it could be an option to Justin's point, if we bid out some other property that doesn't have the the. Commitment this guy put into this property. Uh because he planted hay, is my understanding. And that's that's like a five-year commitment. Um we could bid out some of the other land that's on like a one-year rotation and then potentially charge him the same as what our high bid is. Yeah, I'm just putting out thoughts here so it's fair and but make sure he understands that, you know, it's a five-year. Agreement for that and then it would have to go out for bid. I just think it's fair to the other folks in the area.
Oh, absolutely.
That everybody has an opportunity.
Right, and somebody must have questioned it, otherwise it wouldn't have even been brought to our attention. But yeah, I'm all for it, but like I said, I just feel. Kind of him protect the property, but like right now, uh developments got property, they're gonna pay someone, pay tree down now. Whatever. I just think we need to tell this guy what we're gonna do.
Yeah, I hate to see him not there.
Tell him in five years that we bid out or we'll run, do it different way or? I mean, what what do you guys do?
I guess I'd like to see an arrangement started for next year and I'm fine with this guy continuing on with it. Uh for, you know, a five-year plan, but I think he still should pay something to the county for reimbursement for using the land. For for crops.
Yeah, at least the series set, you know, done what he's done and.
Get nothing.
It'll be next year.
Right, so.
Yeah, I mean, if you put line down and it doesn't work till the year or two after, so.
I say we give him three years and then we'll bid and I'll get give him. That way, I mean, he goes next year, at least, you know, it is, they two years, they grown.
And and I'd be fine with three years, but I'd still like to see next year some kind of compensation. I just don't know how to go about that fairly without putting it up for bid. I don't know, Justin, do you have any ideas or what you've seen in the past?
Um and maybe one of the farmers in the room could help me here, but I think if you've got an oral year-by-year contract under Indiana law, you have to by December one. Let them know by the pre, the the, so if you're gonna change that compensation structure or want to talk with them about it. I would, yeah, get started on that. So you only have a couple of months before, you know, things go south and he's not willing to compensate and you go, okay, we're gonna bid this out. We'll have to. Give him plenty of heads up.
Now, is that something that would fall under an executive meeting or?
Yeah, it could. Um because it's a contract concerning real estate.
So could we bring the farmer in, you think, for?
I can ask. Hey, we know ahead of time, I would thank you, that way, yeah, that makes it better.
Right.
Yeah, talk to him, that'd be the best.
I'll get up with him and get back with you guys, when he's available.
Uh that would definitely meet our obligation by the end of the year.
I'll do that. I'll do, I'll hold up, make sure you guys are available.
We can do it on a day we have a meeting, you know, just like we had today was supposed to be scheduled that perfect. I definitely want to be fair to the guy for sure, but I would like to get some of these properties on track as to some sort of a payment schedule, just so it's fair to everybody in the community.
Right, while we're on that subject, Michael, did they ever call back that people want to buy the ground?
I sent them the email that you asked me to send. I haven't heard back.
Because even that, I believe that'd be bid out. I don't like when you set a price on that, Justin.
Not without appraisals.
Right, oh, okay. I'll worry about that. If they ain't called back, then that'd be.
Do you guys want to sign that and give, if there was, if were they supposed to sign that or just prove this?
Thought that they were going to send us a link to actually opt in, so I think we'll have to click on that link and we'll.
Oh, it must be right here, settlement agreement, that link.
So I need to opt to go up to that link and.
I I thought they were going to send a follow-up email. They did for the city of Knox just about a week ago, but I just seem want to help it for you guys.
I haven't either.
But since they voted on it, when that comes through, we can. Have to go in and.
So but you'll get something and you'll let me know?
Yeah, I got that, so I was.
She's got that.
Oh, yeah. That's the total it comes to. Uh insurance will come to eight hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. That was with the minus the. Building. All right. The holiday schedule. Did you guys see this? Is there anything different on that from? We've had.
Any day we know.
Yeah, June nineteenth. And the reason that we put that on there, which we have done for a couple of years. None of the vendors are available for, and none of the state offices are open. Last year, we had one customer all day. Was it one?
One customer all day.
All day.
So now our banks are closed, our office is closed. And I know the last, there's every other county is closed and last year's state board of accounts said, why are you guys open on this day? So I put it in.
That you got an extra one then, so it's an extra holiday for this?
So that's that's the one I put in. If you don't want it, you can cross it right back out and.
Is it a federal holiday?
So I don't know if it's a federal holiday, but everyone gets sort of observed by.
It's the state holiday because they were all closed.
If yeah, it will, it's it's one of the.
Is your office closed, Jess?
What day is it, sir?
Due to day or something.
June, they call it June teen.
My office manager would know she posted before I.
It is not a state holiday.
It's not.
But then why are they closed?
It's a federal event.
They were all closed. We couldn't call anybody.
Or or banks and then our software company has to leave one person on call in case we need them.
So was it federal holiday in twenty twenty-one, but in twenty twenty-five, it will no longer be marked as a federal holiday.
Oh, really?
Well, there we go, yeah.
Now, whether or not that'll pass, because you know how all that stuff goes, but right now they're saying it will no longer be marked as a federal.
Well, if it's not state and the federal is gonna get rid of it.
Does they post it up as national banks? All of them will still continue to consider it a holiday.
Yeah, I'd say leave it off.
Yeah, Manny.
Um we did a a poll through the recorder's offices last year to see how many of the recorder's offices were closed. And I would say it was probably about thirty percent of us were still open in the state on that day. Out of the ninety-two.
Sounds like you did, or any boards take it off this year, maybe reconsider next year.
Yeah, we'll see how the state and federal go with it. Make a motion, we do not. Do the June nineteenth, but I believe everyone says this.
Is there a second?
Second.
Calls in favor, aye? Play appreciation day, December twelfth. At one P M.
So we just need you to approve that date, that that's okay to have it that day before we go to the council and ask for the money for it.
Yeah, we've always done it, so.
Those are new things, I don't know what you guys talked about.
Every year we have appreciation day for the boys. We have a little party.
That'd be nice.
Uh you led the bill W. You just need an okay on.
I just need no pay on that date and let the judge know that that's the date we're gonna have it and then we start everything else and. Go and beg the council for money for it.
So we get a motion. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the appreciation day on December twelfth.
So and a motion in second, alls in favor, aye?
We got the vendor claims in the amount of four hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars and forty-three cents.
Well, I found this. Assessor reassessment. Is what it was listed as. Did you see that on there?
What is it?
The assessor reset, reassessment, thirteen thousand.
For what? Does it say?
I think that's what he does.
It it's in the claims.
I could see the account number. I might be able to tell you what it is.
And maybe it's something we have to pay every year. It just kind of caught my attention.
Might be one of her programs or something.
Yeah, right.
Like X soft or something. Did you find it?
Not yet.
There's just not normally.
Twelve twenty-four is a fun number.
Getting close, there it is.
Oh, yeah, accurate assessments incorporated. Um I wouldn't swear to it, but I would bet that's her soft, one of the payments for her software or. You know, I could call her. You want me to call her?
And it just caught my attention because we don't normally have claims that big for.
That's all.
Well, there was a couple more we could look at while she's calling. Uh there was one for Skill Center, twenty K and um.
You twenty thousand?
Yeah.
That's to repay, that's what we give them.
One of the ones right below that was forty-six.
Michelle, honey, I'm in the commissioner's meeting and they are questioning what is claimed for. For accurate assessments incorporated for thirteen thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and eight cents.
For A R P, twelve thousand.
That's John, and how often do you pay that? Oh, they pay this every month. It's the reassessment company that comes in.
I don't remember.
It's thirteen thousand every month. Did you hear that? It ranges between ten and fifteen thousand, depending on how many hours they work that month.
Every month.
Unless it's just worded differently this time.
Is it always the accurate assessments incorporated? Okay. What?
For for John, the reassessment office.
Yeah, that's what Michelle said too.
It's legitimate though.
With the skill and.
And you.
Did you need anything else?
No, that was it.
Okay, thank you, honey.
And then A R P thing.
Bye-bye.
I'm not sure on the.
Something with the.
I'm sorry, what?
A R P.
A R P, what about it?
It's American Rescue.
What's the claim?
Twelve thousand, one ninety-nine. Yeah.
Here's this for the um ARPA, I can't remember the number for ARPA off the top of my head, but I think it starts with a four. Four nine maybe or something like that.
The twelve thousand?
Twelve thousand, one ninety-nine sixty.
Uh Nelson System.
That's for the share.
No, this is for the A R P thing.
Yeah, that's what it's under.
Yep, that's it.
So I went back in the minutes for April and it was approved to be paid to be paid for ARPA. Back in a a meeting. I believe it was twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four, maybe twenty twenty-four.
Right, approved back then, paid.
That was probably one of the things that was in the schedule.
Yeah.
Okay, and it's just now coming around here.
Well, there's still several things like the sand fire department and there's several things that haven't come out of there yet, but they've been designated for that.
I just didn't remember approving that one, so that's why.
Yeah, because you you weren't here when they did that.
It's been sitting a while.
Yeah.
And you're sure that one was approved?
Yeah, I had to go back in the minutes and find it and if you'd like, I can.
No, no.
Thank you, go on back.
So we're good on that?
Then checks out.
Motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
Motion in second, alls in favor, aye? Motion to approve the payroll claims in the amount of three hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty cents.
Second.
And motion in second, all those in favor, aye?
He's saying we're gonna reach out to the Alpha, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll get up, you know, send you guys, see if you guys are better over there.
Yeah. Well, sometimes it takes us a while to get things done.
Is there a motion to approve the joint council commissioner minutes from August seventh, twenty twenty-five?
That was just going there, right?
Yeah.
Second.
Alls in favor, aye? There are motion to approve the commissioner's meetings from uh eight eighteen twenty-five. Motion by Donald, second, all those in favor, aye?
Thank you.
You guys got anything else for this? I'll let you guys know on the evening if I got, we need a guy looking. I remember the email I sent you, it's pretty high.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I got another guy looking into it.
Okay.
And he's gonna ask you about this, like, remember when you checked with the treasurer? One last meeting, I'd be meeting for that by being uh how it was coming where they was fixing that and already over budget. We got another year to go, I think. Kate Kate Chafin, I don't know if you know her, she was an auditor for years. She offered to come in for way less money.
I think she did part of the, uh she sat in for a treasurer's office for, as treasurer for a while too.
Yeah, but I don't know the years and all that.
Yeah, I don't either, but I.
I mean, we're over. We're almost to what they said they'd, you know, charge it for the whole amount.
I think we're over with.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah. Well, we approved.
We approved twelve.
Twelve thousand and there are five thousand over.
Right.
And they're only, they're only till May of uh twenty-three.
Yeah, yeah, we still got over a year. I think we'll call. Off in the dirt, of course. And that's just my opinion, I just think.
Well.
And I would even ask, her at one, it was brought up to us and she said they were sure they'd be done for sixteen, whatever it was.
I I'm not sure what road we're going down here, uh but it seems like it's getting costly.
Right, and that's same with me. I mean, I don't know the whole.
Yeah.
Bookwork in there.
And maybe this is something that we need to sit down with Kelly or I hate to say another executive meeting, but is this. Would this fall under something where we can go over this with Kelly to know what's actually happening? Because I don't want to make a decision on assumptions.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh well, I don't know that it would fit an executive. I have to go back and look at the statute, but nothing pops to mind. So it may have to be a public.
May it be a public, yeah. Which would be fine, um but I'd like to hear from Kelly.
Yeah.
What's been done? What can we show for this? And why did we end up so much over budget?
Shouldn't Crow come in and explain their side too? Shouldn't Crow come in and explain their side too?
And bring them in that way, but uh.
Would only be so much and now it's way more.
Yeah. I agree with you, Donny. There's there's something not right here. We need to get a handle on it.
Would you put her on the gen next meeting? I know you think.
Yes, we need to get it figured out, cause I mean, we let it go, it's gonna get worse.
That's all I know.
Okay, Mike, you got it.
A couple of quick things, uh. The Kunslake Bridge.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I guess, and this is just my perspective on it after hearing that nice lady come in and kinda tell us what's going on. So we have a dilapidated bridge that right now is not on the county's schedule. Um, the property on the other side of the bridge is immediately private property. So to the county's point, there really would be no point in taking it on because we don't have. Even a road over there. Um, so my thought is. Somehow that bridge needs to be in private hands if it's gonna be that way, and that way the question's out of it. Or the county needs to take the bridge and the whole road as a public road.
But honestly, what will we benefit from? I drove drove it this weekend. Uh, I mean, even we took it clear over.
The only benefit would be to the people that maybe future buy the houses down the way.
Right.
Uh, because right now they're all working on a handshake, which is great, and it's awesome that community's doing that. But in reality, if the first person in line says, I don't want anybody driving across this anymore, uh, they can.
Yeah.
I mean, that could be an uphill.
Well, even when they was here, they were talking, kids trying to fish off and they might let him fish off.
Right.
I think they'll look into putting the cupboard in between themselves.
Well, and and maybe that's something that Justin can advise us on. I mean, how? How can we make this more concrete that that bridge is not ours? And then how do we determine who? Takes care of that bridge? And and maybe you don't wanna answer that right now.
Yeah. We got caught up in our, well, this was before you, Mike, it was, I think, three, three, four years ago when we first started, got caught up in a similar. Not a similar case, but something, the same kinda legal effect. Oh, man, and it went on for, it actually it predated me and. I might even still be going on, except I'm still be getting notifications from twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen era, you know, so uh. The kinda lingering question is, don't we, did Rachel confirm for us that we were, it was on inventory and we were receiving? Emails for that section of the bridge. That was the other piece to it that I can't remember.
I think that was pretty gray when she was talking.
Said it was maybe designated, maybe we weren't received. I can't remember exactly, um.
Can't go on.
Oh, I remember the pictures. I would walk across it and I don't know why people drive.
You know, I was thinking the same thing.
There's a lot of open questions there. Um, my worry. Is that last scenario that I gave you, if it's on county inventory and receiving money for it because we got caught up in a. How road that we had to put in what a year or two ago, because it was on county inventory and said, well, we've been getting paid even other de minimal, you know, it's not like we're getting. Fifty thousand dollars a year, bridges are ridiculously expensive, but if we're getting money for it and. You know, we're not. Doing our duty to maintain a bridge that indoc considers part of our inventory, that's that's the scenario I'm worried about.
You got her down, Mike, lean on her next.
You want Rachel on the next attempt?
And what road? Yeah, she'll be here. We can talk to her about that bridge too.
Yeah.
And in the meantime, I'll give her a warning so she can get all of her documentation. Lined up.
Yeah.
This this may go on for the rest of the year, even discussing where we wanna go from this. So I wasn't necessarily looking for an answer. I just wanna. Get us going in a direction.
Right.
Um, the the last thing is, um, a couple of months ago, uh, Justin, I think you were gonna send a letter. To a fellow that had five cop cars. And I'm, I'm not sure you ever said that happened or not. You were talking, but I know a lot was going on at that time.
The junk ones?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that was a good question, um.
And maybe you wanna dive back into that. I'm not necessarily looking for an answer again, just trying to wrap up some loose.
I don't wanna guess at it because I don't wanna tell you the wrong thing, but let me go back. There were several letters that I gave to my paralegal and said, hey, mail these out. I wanna make sure that's one of them, cause if not, that's something that might still not be resolved yet.
Yeah, but Michaeline, could you put that on and maybe other business or something for the next meeting, just so we can kinda circle back to that? I just couldn't remember if that was sent or not.
Think the discussion, if I remember right, was. Then I have to go back and look at my notes from that meeting, but it was a some certain amount of money that we were willing to offer because statutorily they couldn't hold us to any more than. Whatever some of your offering was.
Yeah, like, and I know that was discussion and I think we landed on you were gonna send them a letter and just offer them the cars.
Scrap money.
Yeah, and we'd be done with it.
So we hadn't heard anything more from him.
No.
On his.
I have.
Cause it was the astronomically high price that he were there. Yeah, let me get you, let me get your answer. I'll talk to her tomorrow.
No problem. Those are the only two things I had wrote down.
Anyone else have anything, or it's me and me?
Okay. And did you guys get my stuff on the verge? Cause I sent you guys a whole bunch of information on the deed. Um.
Yeah.
The property owners association that owns that block one and everything else.
Yeah.
Um, so. We were supposed to meet in the executive session, so Justin, I don't know how much of this we can actually discuss.
Oh, we didn't have an executive because of the underlying issue that we called it for.
Correct.
Did not, okay.
Correct. However, we weren't.
The personnel issue you're talking about, since it's not about specific personnel, I think you're okay.
But I think you're suggesting he can stop you.
Yes, yes, please, there's nothing. Um, okay, so, um. As y'all know, I've informed you guys that we're having an ongoing issue with the tax system. Uh. Right now, we have. Limited access. Um, for public to the property tax software. Now, there is a. The treasurer has access to it, but their computer is behind their counter. Um, which.
You say the treasurer had access?
Yeah, the treasurer has access to it. I'm just kinda giving you a little. Um, but her computer is behind her counter. Now Melissa went down um, on Monday at my timeline. Um. And she went and she accessed that computer, Kelly's on her behind the counter.
With permission.
Yeah, with permission. She looks up what she needed, um, because we did not have access on our public stations in the recorder's office. Um.
You didn't have access, cause Stanley showed you also.
Um. So we don't exactly, I don't know exactly who shut us off. No one has told us that.
Okay.
Um. There's the rumor mill, um, but. I I don't know. I don't have an exact. I have a report that says Stanley did.
Okay.
Um, however, I I don't know if Stanley did or not. Um, so Melissa went down there and went behind the counter. Uh, Kelly then called me. And told me that she was then informed that she's not allowed to let Melissa behind her counter. Um, she got yelled at for letting Melissa behind her counter.
You don't find me.
By Teresa.
Excuse me, I did not know that Melissa was behind her counter, so that is a lie.
Um, so. We were, this was a back and forth all last week. She would allow us, we were allowed to have permission. And then they took print rights away from us and then now we're back to being completely blocked now. My stations, my public stations are out. You walk into my office, you know that those are public stations. They are not behind my counter. They are open, they are signed in. Anybody can access them. You can access whatever you want. You wanna go on the internet in there? You can, I mean. As much as our IT will allow access to whatever. In Michaeline's office, they do not have a. Quote unquote, public station.
Hold it. We do too have a public computer.
Okay, but hold on. It is on their counter and it faces the back of their counter.
No, it doesn't. It can face either way. It gets turned around. If the public wanna access it, if we need to use it for a customer, it's turned towards us. If the public needs it, it gets turned right back around for the public.
The only time I've seen anybody turn that screen is Suzanne, when she's typing in it. And she'll turn the screen to show somebody what what they're discussing.
Okay, let me, let me say something. Back in twenty twenty. When COVID was. Yeah, they were given access because they had. That they had, I guess I was told they had to fight with the commissioners to have a public, one public station in the whole building. Because of COVID. So everybody's publics were shut down except for the one, so we allowed them access to Lau at that time. So that they could have public, but actually after COVID, it should have been locked out anyway after COVID was over.
But it never was, right?
Was before COVID and then all of a sudden Rachel gave them permission because of it being COVID.
There, there was a.
There is a different desk, a different public access.
It was a totally different setup though.
By the way, this is Melissa Jack. She is the. Resident searcher. She's in our office three to five times a week. Um, and the one that uses that software.
She didn't supply that software. It just has to come to our office too.
It's not, it's not set up how it was before.
It should be.
But when have you informed me of that? Or where is your sign? Because your sign at the desk is not for.
Public. No, there's a big, not behind the counter, no, but there's a big sign up there that says that is a public computer, the one that's on the counter.
Did that go up last week?
I don't know when it went up.
Exactly, it went up last.
Public computer all along.
And the assessor has a public computer also at her counter. All I have to do is ask you to.
It is at her counter. It again faces the backside over there.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay, so just going back, let's say two months. We'll say when things were kumbaya in this situation. Why, what changed and why can't we just go back to that if everybody was happy with that agreement at that time?
Well, she locked us out of Laredo.
I did not lock you out of Laredo.
Locked us out from being able to print. And we were not supplying, helping people print deeds. She said we were doing it to help people do a deed. We haven't been doing that. You have a list of what we use Laredo for.
I have a big list.
I have asked for this list and nothing, it has not been given to me.
You didn't ask me for a list.
I asked in two emails.
I didn't get email.
Um, so as an elected official and a department head. I correspond with the other elected official and the department head when I have a question or would like something from the office.
So.
Really should I be? I mean, that should be, you should go talk, Michaeline, Michaeline should be out talking to the vice person.
I feel like I'm caught in the middle of all this. I've been coming here for twenty years.
Right.
I do my job.
It was going fine, right?
Yes, we stopped them from printing. Okay, so I've done this before because there were prints coming in. Attached to deeds with the legal description on them, and that's what was happening. We were not providing those. They had to get them somewhere because they can only get them from Laredo or Tapestry.
We don't.
Good day, have done that and then you got a copy, but the public not had a copy. I mean, is that possible?
That's what I'm saying, like the, unless they came into my office first, purchased a copy of that to put it with their deed. We, it wouldn't have been there, so.
But we, auditor's offices, the ones that are supposed to give out legal descriptions.
But not a copy of a deed, cause a recorded deed.
Here is what we use Laredo.
So a lot of times people will come in with their own copy of a deed. And what we don't like is when you have a new deed and you put the old deed behind it. They have gotten from you.
Do you have another copy of that? With you.
So does it cost either department money to share these licenses?
So Laredo is a subscription based product, so yes, we do pay for Laredo.
But are you paying extra? But are you paying extra so that their office can access it?
We.
I think each office gets paid something to do different money, right?
Right. So if they were to have a subscription right now, they would have four, cause they have four logins.
Correct.
Um, and all four of their logins use over three thousand minutes a month, which would be a free, each. Subscription would be a three hundred dollar each plan.
So when they had access, it was costing the recorder more money? Or is that, you might not understand it?
No, it wasn't costing us more money. However, you're taking, if you are printing, which. We have differences on that one, then that is a dollar per print for us, which. If you guys have spent any time this year listening to me. Our office pretty much runs itself.
Uh, I beg your pardon. We checked that out too. Her budget is ninety some thousand and she brought in county general forty-five thousand. Or right around that amount. I can't remember the exact figures, but it's about half.
Okay.
That's not running your whole budget, that's half.
So the ninety thousand of our budget is our salaries. So you're paying half of our salaries. You're not paying for anything else.
All three dollar prints? Off the one dollar.
No, that's what comes into county general. The dollar prints go into her perpetual fund. If I'm not mistaken.
Manly speak, sure. Our budget, we use ninety thousand, what, what was it? So that's. Jennifer's salary, my salary and our part-time money. We put back, what was it, Michaeline?
Like forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand back into that, so. That's what fifty-one thousand dollars that we actually use out of county general. That is the only money we use out of county general. Repairing my books. Buying my shelving, our paper, our everything comes out of our perpetuation fund, so, yes. We essentially run and pay for most of our office. Out of. The recording money, out of the copy money, out of.
So I guess my question is, how much money is coming in from your dollar copies? I don't, I don't need a dollar, like to the dollar, but are we talking a thousand dollars a year or significantly more than?
Significantly.
I pay like a grand a month.
Like this month alone. Or. Printing was like eight hundred and fifty-three dollars of just copies. That's not including her subscription fee that she pays.
I pay that too for a home one.
So if Melissa's paying, have you been paying for?
Yeah. The law copies too?
And.
Yes. We're not getting the money from the law copy.
That's our.
That's our software. We should be getting that money.
So Manny's been putting that money in her fund.
Okay, so here we go for that one. Um, so when they get a copy, they can only charge ten cents for it, which we was fine. We worked out in the email. But we would separate her tax copies from our copies and at the end of the month, she would give them a check for their. Five dollars and she, or whatever it was, cause they.
Significant.
There, but it's, cause they're. They can only charge ten cents for a copy. Our copies are a dollar. Um, in the recorder's office, the recorder's statute says we can charge a dollar for a copy. We were fine. That was fine. We were gonna separate them.
Didn't you say in your email, you guys had figured out where you take like eighty cents and?
No. No, we weren't even gonna divide it. We were just gonna write down Melissa's tax copies for Michaeline and then. She would, she would write a check to Michaeline at the end of the month for the copies that. Were printed in our office for her, using my equipment, my ink, my paper, giving her her ten cents. For that copy. And then we would, and she would separate her recorded copies and we would keep track of those, like we always do.
But we were fine with that. You have to go back five years. She's been doing this for five years.
No.
I'm not gonna be able to separate five years.
Well, I'm just saying, it's been five years.
So we have never stopped or blocked them from seeing Laredo. All four, all four of their.
But there are reasons why they do have to print it when they're doing, making a new legal description for splits or. Or whatever, I think the list you got, one of you has the copy of the list. There are reasons why we need to print it out, but we don't give it to people.
Right.
Them from getting a dollar. Doubt I gave it back to them, I thought they were giving it back to us and then they didn't, so. We took.
Because I asked for this list, Michaeline, nobody ever asked, gave me this list of why you needed printing. I asked you for that in two different emails.
Well, I saw it in one, but I. She prepared it and I forgot to send it down, I've had some problems, so you've got it now.
And I asked for a guarantee that they would not be handing out or photocopying or anything.
That you're not helping people with their legal descriptions, I mean, you came down to our office last week wanting Suzanne to help you. With the legal description, that's not.
No.
Your job.
No, that's not what I asked.
I was sitting there.
It's not what I asked, the deed that I brought down to Suzanne. Had split from a number and it was completely crossed out and no new parcel number under there. So no one knows where that came from, for one, and the second one that I brought down was. A deed that had a parcel number on it, but on GIS shows two parcels. So that deed should have had two parcel numbers under it on their stamp and it did not, so those are both corrections.
And you think that come from their office, I mean.
Because we don't stamp, the auditor stamp, yeah, no, we don't stamp.
And she, and she received a phone call in regards to that. And she transferred the phone call down to Suzanne and then she also went down there to try and talk to Suzanne. Because when, it was a real estate agent, because they were putting the property, they wanted to put the property up for sale.
Right.
And they said on the GIS, it said two description, two parcel numbers. And on the deed, it was only one, so she went down there, that was one of them, and then I know she, there was a survey that was done. That she went down there and talked to Suzanne and.
Because there's a piece of land on the survey that says deed not found.
You know.
And that was the, the marked out split from and the number and no new number put back on it. And that's what I was asking her, I, I said is, could this be that missing deed, the deed that wasn't found? That was my question.
Well, I guess this is kind of my two cents, but I, I think the goal of both departments needs to be as helpful as possible to the citizens of Stork County.
Absolutely.
And, you know, however we get there, it's however we get there, but. It sounds like this has been working for five years, this arrangement, and if Mandy needs something to say, they're not printing stuff off. I guess I don't have an issue with that, but I would love to see the two departments working together and I don't see why either should be blocked. Either direction, that's just my two cents.
And especially like you say, we've worked for five years.
Right.
And like you say, what, a week ago, whatever, this all started out.
Right. I would just, I mean, the goal for me is when people walk in the door, fifty percent of them are already aggravated because they have to come here and deal with something.
Yeah.
So I would like them to come in and, you know, not feel any tension from two departments and if we can have the services, the help, I think that's great. So is there any way we can get back to where we were a couple of months ago, uh, with respect from both departments, so we can move forward?
Yeah, uh, Justin, is there something you can come up with that they will sign, assuming they will not print for public use?
You guys want me to do that, not to. I mean, if you guys want me to draw something up.
I mean, I would think that, and if the auditor says she's not gonna do that, that would be.
Hopefully we won't have to draw, so I get your opinion, but, I mean.
This is not the first. That's, that's my reasoning, this is not the first.
No, this is the first time that we, not the first time we've been accused of it, but we do not do it, I don't know where anybody gets their information from. We've also had phone calls from people saying that you are helping them with their legal description and some lady called. Just a couple of weeks ago and said that you told her she had over an acre of property when she had point one nine. So it goes both ways. We're not handing out deeds and it's not your job to do anything with the legal description. And we don't, well, we don't either, so where do we go from there?
Well, if you told somebody they had over an acre and they only had point one nine, where did they get that from? They said they got it from you. That's a.
But you guys can't really go by that, you keep supplies in our head, and I said about me, and Charlie said about me.
Michaeline, were you there when this conversation happened? No, but they, the girls told me I have to be able to trust my employees.
That's why I say, I mean, hopefully we won't go, I mean, yeah, we're there to help the public like Mike saying, but you, you can't take everybody's word for it.
Well, that's what I said, she.
What Mike said about me or Charlie or whoever.
Public has gone down there and told her we helped them do a.
But that's what I'd say, you can't go by.
Exactly. We can't touch someone's deed and if they have to make a change, I, they have to initial, I can't even change the date on a deed. Let alone do I want to stand there and help somebody fill out a deed, I just want to get them in and get them out, we send them to the library, you need to help, we can't even print out.
It's a felony if we help somebody do a deed, it's a felony.
We've never, we send them to the library, if they get help from somebody there, that's fine, but it's not us.
At this point, I think we'll do like, say, need to get along, they tell each other what you're gonna do. Hopefully we won't have to have some lawyers, you know, from a lawyer. And if there's another problem, then you come to us again.
When I come tomorrow, because I couldn't get taxes today again, when I come here tomorrow, where can I get my, for my job?
Well, it sounds like we're gonna go back like it was five years.
Okay.
Right?
I mean.
It's okay with me, but it's okay with Mandy.
You mean like two months ago, before the start?
Yeah, before it all.
Yeah, yeah, for the, yeah, for the last five years and we're good till this, the month ago.
And I think that had been working.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
Until just recently, whatever went wrong.
I can separate them out, that's not a problem, like now.
But and just so you know, tonight, you, they do have a public computer, they're saying in their office, so if something was wrong with Manny or broke down or whatever.
Will I just come and. Or ask you?
You don't even have to ask, it's a public computer and there's a sign there.
Is the keyboard out facing the public?
Yeah.
It's a wireless keyboard, it goes.
Yeah.
It's wireless.
But I mean, is it stationed for the public use?
Well, if they want to use it, they can just, they can reach it.
Where the public can just.
Yeah.
On there.
They can get to it, absolutely.
Because that was, Melissa said that was, it was uncomfortable because it's not, it.
I didn't know that was an option because on your, on your table, it's.
But I mean, it's gonna be in both your offices, so.
Care which office, I just, if, for like a week now, I've been having trouble getting.
Like it was. Two months ago.
So are you guys going to tally her copies or is she going to do it in the office?
I don't, I don't know how many copies she's done, I don't know. Well, we can't retro.
I'm talking from this point forward, I mean, are you guys keeping track of that? Well, we don't have any idea what she, how many copies she's made. That's what I'm asking, do you want her to bring them to you or are you wanting her to? The agreement, I thought Mandy was gonna keep track. Uh, perform, I mean, because.
Yeah.
The searchers that come in normally to search in our office, there is a book for them. There. I mean, and this is all I've known. You know, that I thought we were doing, so.
You good with that, Michaeline?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, does anyone else have anything for us?
How's the new chairs?
I thought so, I thought, I've done the same one the other day.
Fluffier than they are, so when you first sit, you're like, whoa.
Right. Right?
I don't think you guys have officially approved.
Motion adjourned.
The move. Second.
I only put. One thing on the agenda, what, our.
I have some bad. Getting low.